At this time, uh... Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome, as I call to order, the April 2023 meeting of the Escambia County School Board. Whether you are joining us via our live stream or in the audience, we appreciate your interest in the education of the students of Escambia County. I ask that you silence your cell phones at this time. I remind you that if you wish to speak to either an agenda item at the public hearings or for policy changes, or at the public forum, you must complete a speaker request form found on the table at the rear of the room and bring it forward to Ms. Harris at the front table. On the form, please be sure to indicate whether your intention is to speak at the public forum or to speak, or to a specific item on tonight's agenda. It's the board's practice to pull items from the consent agenda when someone asks to speak to them. The consent agenda items include curriculum and instruction, finance, human resources, and operations. And you must submit your speaker form prior to the approval of the consent agenda, or the adoption of that agenda. It's the tradition of the Escambia County School Board to begin our meeting with an invocation or a motivational moment followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. This month, Mr. Adams, District One, will lead us, but before he does, I want everyone to remember during that moment or during the prayer that this month, we've lost two of our teachers. Mr. Luke Box, who was employed at Bailey Middle School, passed away, as well as Ms. Susan Fell, who was a longtime teacher at Escambia West Gate. So as you do your prayers or remembrance, please keep them in your prayers and thoughts. Thank you. Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I would like to invite Pastor Blake Nance from the Beulah Church to do the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Let's pray. Father, would you love you, we thank you, Lord, for the opportunity we have to come before you in prayer. Lord, we do come saddened in this moment, Lord, to hear of the passing of the two teachers in our county. Lord, I pray that you'll be with their families. Lord, wrap them in your loving arms, help them to feel you in a very special way. I pray that you'll be with us tonight. We thank you for our school board, our elected officials. Pray that you will be with them, be with all of us tonight. We pray for wisdom. Lord, pray for understanding as we gather together. Most of all, we pray that you get all the honor and all the glory for what is said and done. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which is standing. At this time, we will move to the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Superintendent, are there any additions or deletions to your recommended agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a number this evening under Section Six, Proposed Additions or Revisions to School District Rules. First reading, we have Item A is deleted, Item B is deleted. Those are the code of conducts. Item D is a delete-add for the elementary code of student conduct. Item E is a delete-add for the secondary code of conduct. Item F is an add for the elementary code of conduct, and Item G for the secondary code of student conduct. Under Section 24, Consent Finance Purchasing, Item U is added. It's a winter freeze remediation at various schools. Under Section 31, Consent Operations, Facilities Planning Miscellaneous, Item C is added, lease agreement between the School Board of Escambia County, Florida and Community Action Program Committee with a purchase option. Under Section 43, Items from the Superintendent, Item A is added, a resolution of the School Board of Escambia County, Florida, approving the assignment of the master lease purchase agreement and lease schedule. Item B also is an add, a resolution of the School Board of Escambia County, Florida, approving the lease of certain land owned by the board. And those complete the additions and deletions.
All right. State statutes and school board rules require that changes made to the agenda after publication be based on a finding of good cause determined by the person designated to preside over the meeting and stated in the record. Is there any objection from any board member to the additions or deletions? Light? Oh, your light's on.
Because I'm going to make a motion.
Oh, you're getting ahead of the... Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended for good cause at this meeting?
I move we adopt the amended motion, amended agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please vote. You're either... I pay, sir. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Moving into committee and departmental reports, we will start with the PTA presentation, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Gamble is here to give an update for PTA.
Good evening. Thank you for the time to speak on behalf of the Escambia County Council PTA. Our PTAs continue to provide support to our schools through their volunteer efforts. Recently, Kingsfield Elementary PTA's box top coordinator was featured as one of box tops coordinators who go above and beyond. We congratulate Tawana Edwards for this recognition and are grateful for all of her hard work and dedication in raising funds to benefit the school's needs. Pleasant Grove PTA recently held a successful fundraiser with Krispy Kreme doughnuts. It was a sweet deal for the students and their families. Scenic Heights PTA is in full swing and is planning their spring carnival, which will be held on Friday, April 28th. I hope some of you are able to attend. Our middle school PTSAs, such as Jim Bailey in Ferry Pass, are busy planning end-of-school dances for their students. The end of the year is also a time for gratitude from our PTAs as they plan a celebration for Teacher Appreciation Week, May 8th through 12th. The end of school is a mere five weeks away, if I count it correctly, but our PTAs are still busy supporting our students, families, teachers, and community. In closing, I'd like to remind you about this Thursday, April 20th, when ECC PTA will host their annual Student of the Year ceremony at Washington High School's auditorium at 6:00 PM. This event celebrates a student who was recognized, or celebrates a student from each school who was recognized as overcoming an adversity but still excelling at school. I hope you will attend there, attend. But tonight at Washington High School Auditorium is the fifth-grade violin spring concert, in which I will be on my way to attend to watch my granddaughter Lexi perform. I thank you again for the time to share some of the work of our PTAs in Escambia County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gamble. Mr. Superintendent, the Stellar Employee of the Month?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Escambia County Public Schools Office of Community Involvement is proud to recognize Ms. Laura Yon as the Stellar Employee for the Month of April 2023. Ms. Yon, please come forward with your coworkers, family, and friends. Ms. Laura Yon is an administrative clerk at Lipscomb Elementary School. If you think of being all-in, you immediately think of Ms. Yon. She is simply amazing. Ms. Yon chose to leave a successful career outside of education to come to our district. She is a servant leader with a positive impact on our students, and she does just that each and every day. It is obvious she genuinely loves our students. Ms. Yon takes an interest in their lives and what they have to say in encouraging them to do their best. She makes each of them feel important, special, and valued. When Lipscomb needed help with their car rider line, she volunteered and has now become one of the first people you see every day. Lipscomb students love Ms. Yon. When she's not there, they miss her. Ms. Yon has had a positive impact on everyone around her. She takes time to personally engage with students, parents, and guests. She welcomes them with a smile and honest concern for their needs and kind words that set the tone for a positive experience. Her calming personality and professionalism can quickly diffuse even the most difficult of situations, and the folks she interacts with leave feeling respected and cared for. Ms. Yon also has a positive impact on her coworkers. She has an awesome work ethic, stays focused on her job, and is a great team player. She anticipates things that need to be done and does them before being asked. She's one of the most responsible employees we could ask for. She multitasks and juggles the responsibilities of an often very busy front office with poise and efficiency. Her attitude is contagious, and the example she sets is inspiring. We couldn't be any more thankful for Ms. Yon. She is a blessing to her school, the students, and the community. She is an exemplary model of being united for every student to succeed and is well-deserving of this honor. Laura Yon is stellar because of her excellent work ethic and dedication to staff and students throughout the Escambia County School District. She contributes to the healthy culture that supports high-performing teachers, leaders, and staff. It is for these reasons and so many others that she has been selected as our Stellar Employee of the Month of April 2023. She will receive a plaque, pin, and a check for $100 from Members First Credit Union. Congratulations, Laura Yon.
I'd just like to thank Escambia County for this honor and appreciating the employees each month. I'd mostly like to thank my administrative, my principal, my assistant principal, who are here with me, and the office staff, and my husband. Thank you so much.
Superintendent, the Choose Wellness Challenge winners?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director of Risk Management and Benefits, Mr. Kevin Wyndham, and Coordinator of Benefits and Employee Wellness, Mr. Pat Palmer, please approach the podium. Each year, the district challenges employees to participate in the Choose Wellness Challenge. The challenge is to see which school or major department can achieve the highest percentage of employee participation and the highest percentage of improvement from one period to the next in the Choose Wellness Challenge. Each site-based administrator and wellness coordinator needed to motivate employees to complete all four steps of the health screening program. The locations with the highest achievement would be recognized annually, including a financial incentive reward to be used for wellness initiatives at each location. Awards are paid from the wellness dollars, so no taxpayer dollars are used. The decision to create a district wellness center and program was made to promote employee wellness because a healthy workforce costs less in medical costs and lost work hours, which in turn creates a more productive and higher-achieving workforce and higher student achievement. It is my pleasure to announce the following awards. For the 2022 Superintendent's Wellness Challenge, overall winner is Spencer Bibbs Center at 87.5%. Spencer Bibbs also had the greatest percentage increase in participation at a 38.8% increase, but could only be presented one award. Will representatives from Spencer Bibbs please come forward to receive your plaque, your $1,000 check, and be congratulated by the board?
Yes, congratulations. Great job, sir. Congratulations.
The next award is for the most improved this year is Home Elementary School with an increased participation of 18.2%. Will representatives from Home Elementary School please come up to receive your plaque and the $500 check and come be congratulated by the board?
Thank you for coming.
Good job, lady. Okay. Be careful, ladies. She might do. Yeah, oh yeah. I have two. Okay. Wouldn't either.
In addition to create a healthy competition between schools and major departments at each level, awards of $250 each are also awarded at this time to the highest percentage participation at each level. As your school or department is announced, please come up to receive your award and be congratulated by the board. The highest percentage participation at the elementary school level goes to Malino Park Elementary School at 64.29%.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Super. Or somebody went back to school. Make it okay? Okay, good.
The highest percentage participation at the middle school level goes to Ferry Pass Middle School at 44.55%.
Congratulations. Congratulations, friend. Congratulations, good to see you.
And the highest percentage participation at the high school level goes to Northview High School at 43.75%.
Good job, my friend.
Congratulations to all schools and departments for your success. We look forward to seeing how schools and departments will step up for the 2023 Superintendent's Choose Wellness Challenge. Thank you.
If there is no objection from the board, I'm going to ask to move forward Items 43A and B. We have a time-certain meeting at 6:30 PM this evening, and we need to adopt these resolutions before that meeting. Any objections? Seeing none. Our first Item A, a resolution approving the assignment of the master lease. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Next, Item B, a resolution approving the lease of certain land. Is there a motion? So moved. Motion, I have a sec, need a second?
My second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We will now begin public forum. The purpose of the public forum is to give members of the public the opportunity to address the school board on any matter regarding education and the administration of our schools. In this setting, we as board members are not compelled to answer questions or to respond to you, and typically will not engage in back-and-forth dialogue in this venue. However, this board and the superintendent will note your contact information for a response if appropriate. As always, we invite you to contact any of us by phone or email for follow-up. A list of our meeting times and locations is posted on the Escambia County School District website. Speakers must adhere to the guidelines printed on the back of the speaker form. On the form, please be sure to indicate whether your intention is to speak at the public forum or to speak, or to a specific item on tonight's agenda. And please direct your comments to the chair. You are expected to be respectful in your address to the board. You are also asked to use titles and not individual names. Please, personal attacks against school board members, superintendent's staff, or employees will not be tolerated. If you fail to follow these guidelines, you will be warned by the chair and subject to removal if violations continue. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Mrs. Odom will serve as parliamentarian. Ms. Buswell is our timekeeper. And we'll start the timer with your opening remarks. The buzzer will sound when your time has elapsed, and when the timer sounds, please bring your comments to a close. Our first speaker is Melanie Eubanks, and she has six minutes because time is donated from Lynn Hawn. Okay, thank you. Ms. Eubanks, our next one will be Amani Gro.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak and share my concerns. The work of the school board is appreciated, and it is important to the lives of the children and the families in our community. I am thankful to be able to say the pledge tonight and that the Pledge of Allegiance is still set in the schools in the morning. I believe it shows honor to our military. It encourages loyalty and unity. And united is a word I saw on the Escambia County website that describes what the school wants to do, the school board. The leadership team also likes to say that they like to work together to provide a quality education for all children, regardless of their life situations and circumstances. When we come together to work, we put children first. The three most important things to our leadership team are trust...
Ms. Eubanks, hey, she had six minutes. Oh, you did pick it up at the right place?
Yeah, what time I go?
All right, thank you.
So I've already used half my time? Okay.
Yeah, I thought she used less time than that, but I'll go with what you have. Right, I saw that, but, okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Eubanks, go ahead.
All right. The three most important things your team said was trust, respect, and community engagement. That's exactly what is happening here, is the community is in getting engaged. I am here because I want to make our schools better. However, finding out about the sexually explicit books and age-inappropriate books in our media centers, websites, and instructional materials heartbreaking. The trust has been broken. Just last Thursday, we saw a third grader come in here who had transgender book on her Chromebook. There is more books that are being found on the elementary level. I am just asking that you would consider postponing the AR until all these books can be vetted. Parents have the right to teach their children about sex and sex education, and I just, I just think we need to, to work on that even more than what we have been. Also, the limited access, the unlimited access, and no access that parents can have. I don't feel like all that can be put on the parent because we're trusting you to make sure that whatever our kids have access to at school, instructionally, self-selection, is not going to be books that are banned by our state laws that have pornography in them, that have sexually explicit content in them, and transgender for the elementary grades. I just, I just don't know. It's like, I, I have questions that were printed off last night of a Chromebook in elementary school, and the question is, "Her mom holding a pamphlet about gender assignment surgery, signed with a rainbow flag and the words transgender." That's the choices on the answers, and we need to do something before more parents who don't want their children exposed to that in elementary school find those books on their Chromebooks. I just think we do not want that liability. There is some that's... There is some that's on the adult book list at the library, public library, that's in the elementary school. I don't know who's checking this, but something needs to be done. We are not, we are not, I don't know, we're law-abiding citizens. We want to uphold integrity. We want our children protected, we want their innocence protected. I'm concerned about who's picking out the books. Are they not concerned about the law? Would they actually be comfortable getting up here, reading the books, reading about people's sexual experiences in detail? That concerns me. We have been negligent in protecting our children from pornography. These kind of choices do not build trust, respect, and encourage community engagement. We have to stand up for our children and the protection of their purity. It is the parents' right to teach their children about sexuality. Stop letting our children access these books until our systems are purged. There are laws against that. We are one nation under God. We have been made by a heavenly Father. We are eternal beings. We have choices, life, death, blessings, curses. We have to make the right choice for our students. I have compassion for my fellow human beings, I have compassion for the children. Please honor your commitment to be united, working together to put children first. Err on the side of caution when selecting books, and get them removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eubanks. Our next speaker is Amani Gro, and she has three minutes donated from Alicia Sloan. Thank you. And after her will be Rob Bennett.
I'm sorry I have to read this on the heels of a festive occasion here with all the awards, but I feel like we need to talk about it. I believe it is important to our discussion about age-appropriate reading materials in our schools to include several short passages from a few of the books that have been submitted for review. However, FCC rules stipulate that certain words cannot be broadcast on radio and television. Therefore, I have altered these words by reading the first letter only. "In a very different neighborhood, a very different girl closes her eyes and lets go, feels the boy's head between her legs, painting pleasure on her body with his tongue, just like she taught him," page nine of The Nowhere Girls. There is an obvious disconnect among the various stakeholders, including parents, instructional staff, administrators, community members, and the school board, as to the appropriate placement of sexually graphic and inclusive books in our schools and libraries and classrooms. Many of us are genuinely concerned about our children being exposed to graphic sexual content, profanity, and topics to which they are not mature enough to understand, and we want to ensure books and other curricular materials are age-appropriate, including for our second education learners. As I reexamine the book, The Nowhere Girls, which was approved last month by the school board for our juniors and seniors, I wonder about the author's intentions for including sexually graphic content and excessive profanity. The F-word is used almost fifty times in this book. On page seventy-seven, a character describes having sex with a woman in her late thirties as "the oldest I've ever effed," did it doggy style in her basement while her kid played video games upstairs. On page one-sixty-seven, one of the main characters refers to the school principal as a royal bee. In another scene midway through the book, a female character says, "I kind of like sex, I don't know, I mean, sorry if this is TMI, but I can get so horny sometimes." In the same scene, another girl shares, "I like having sex, and I'm not ashamed of it. No one should be." In response, another girl says, "You're kind of my hero right now." It was mentioned during the March Public Meeting, the author's character depictions and dialogue represent typical teens and is a means to relate better to her readers. The typical teen has only become typical because the adults in our society have molded him or her that way. At what point in a child's development is it appropriate to expose minors to this type of material? To portray characters engaged in drug use? To read explicit sexual acts? For children to read the F-word and other words like the P-word, BJ, the S-word, wet humping, handjob, slut, the B-word, the GD-word, and masturbation? All of these words and phrases are used in the book, The Nowhere Girls. We do not have a central public school library with all books being available to all students. Books and other reading materials are assigned to grade levels based on their appropriateness to a child's age and developmental level. College and university libraries include advanced reading materials and represent higher education learning, to which a number of books currently available in Escambia County schools would be more appropriately placed. High school students are still considered minors, and therefore, books that include adult themes and language are not necessarily suitable for our ninth-to-twelfth graders. For example, Lucky and Push, which the board voted last week to remove from Escambia County Schools, were both determined to be more suitable for adult readers. What follows is an excerpt from a Sarah Mas book available to high school students until a reconsideration form was submitted in January of this year. "His tongue swept my mouth again and timed to the finger that he inside of me. My hips undulated, demanding more, craving the fullness of him, and his growl reverberated in my chest as he added another." And an adult privately read unabridged passages from this book to a nine, thirteen, or even sixteen-year-old, would this be considered abuse? Why is our school setting any different? Again, what threshold in regards to sexually explicit content does a book need to meet to be considered inappropriate for high school students? Based on the current challenges posted on the district's website, the Book Review Committee recently voted to remove four Sarah Mas books from all school libraries. It would be helpful if the committee shared its reasoning behind the recommendation for the removal of this particular series, and how this determination might apply to books containing similar graphic descriptions. The district also needs to address the accessibility of the associated assessments for reading materials through the Core App Dashboard. For example, a quiz-based assessment for The Nowhere Girls can currently be accessed by a nine-year-old student via an accelerated reading program. Answer options in one quiz included terms like virgin, dyke, gay, and transgender. Why is this reading assessment an option for a nine-year-old student to be able to access? I would like to further note, a title search in the district's Destiny Program shows The Nowhere Girls still appears to remain unrestricted at two of our high schools. Several other books voted on by the board appear to still be available to students as well. Additional measures should be taken to ensure decisions reached by the board are applied across all learning platforms. Our united goal should be to protect students from harmful exposure to mature topics, books, and language, and I believe we can work together to achieve this shared goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Bennett has three minutes, and he'll be followed by Neil McDonald with three minutes.
This is concerning, the SRO agreement with Sheriff's Department and passed R and R handbook now, the Codes of Conduct, which would have been a longer speech, but I got language this morning from Ms. Odom, which I appreciate, concerning SRO interviews. There was a principal meeting in September of twenty-two where Ms. Odom presented and supplied documents to the administrators to understand and follow regarding SRO interviews with students. We know this was necessary due to my family's experience in October of 2020. On November ninth, I supplied the board, superintendent's staff, and Ms. Odom a paper copy from the head SRO dated ten-twenty-four on behalf of the sheriff to all ECSO SROs. The email changed the SRO's interview process to students to not interviewing students without parents or guardians present. Ms. Payne distributed that email expediently to all administrators to let them know of the change. Five months later, you guys haven't done anything. Parents have no clue of the change due to no action by the Escambia County Public Schools beyond Ms. Payne's email. There are provisions to modify the SRO agreement in Article twelve, yet there was no action and no attempts. There would be no attempt from the Escambia County Sheriff's Office, as they had already expressed a lack of good faith per Article eleven, in my experience, in the SRO stating that they did not have to abide by school board policy. The agreement says they have to. Do I expect you to modify this agreement now? No, because you're not going to do it. I do expect you and ask that you, board members, represent your constituency by backing Ms. Odom on current or soon-to-be negotiations with the sheriff and PPD. Make sure that the LEOs follow the agreement and hold them to it. Whether a student is in school or within the city of Pensacola, or in the north end of the county, they should expect the same treatment. You have two different agreements with each LEO agency that are different. Make them the same. Make it transparent to the students and parents to the expectation in agreement and the codes of conduct. Ms. Odom just sent me this morning proposed language for the new codes of conduct, which would replace paragraph, chapter seven, paragraph ENF. That's a great start, okay? Now make the staff have the same code of conduct. You have codes of conduct for the students and the parents with duties for staff and administration in there. Unless there's a mirrored code for your staff to follow, we don't really expect them to follow a code for a student, would we? You have to do that. You have to let staff know what their responsibilities are in these types of things. I'd like to thank Ms. Odom for your dialogue correspondence. You're the only one that's really responded to anything I've put to the board and to the superintendent's office. And this week, you gets the attention I learned from you and you, so please do something rather than nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Neil McDonald, three minutes, followed by Marilyn McDonald with six minutes.
Mr. Chairman and the entire school board, thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. I would like to address a speech that was made Thursday night at the special board meeting to discuss the two books, Lucky and Push. A regular speaker that always speaks on behalf of keeping the books stated that the school board members were elected to be leaders and not followers, so that you all should follow the majority, and not the minority. He went on to say that those that want to remove the books may be the most vocal, but they are not in the majority. He went on to say, said that there were more Republicans in Escambia County, which is a true statement, but that those who want to remove the books are not in the majority, even those that are Republican, and that's definitely not true. I think what happens is that people tend to fellowship with their like-minded people, so they assume that everyone believes the way that they do. Sorry, but people are entitled to their own opinion, but not their own set of facts. A recent Rasmussen poll showed that seventy percent of people think that books that have depictions of sex acts, whether they're heterosexual or homosexual, should not be present in public school, public high school libraries. That number rises to seventy-nine percent for middle school and eighty-five percent for elementary school libraries. That was a nationwide poll, and we know that Escambia County is definitely more conservative than the national average. Just like you all voted five to zero to remove those two books, I believe that at least eighty percent of Escambia County residents would agree with you if all, if they all saw what was in those books. I've had the privilege of serving on several juries since moving to Pensacola over forty-two years ago. One of the trials was a civil case where a person purchased a local business, but after a couple of years, they quit paying the monthly payment that was agreed on by both parties. The lawyers were arguing over what should be allowed as admissible evidence to be presented in court. They kept withholding evidence, and the judge kept sending us back to the jury room, and we were getting more and more confused because we were not allowed to see the evidence. Finally, the judge told us to go to the break room while he discussed it with the two attorneys. He finally joined us in the break room and said that he was going to do something that he had never done in his lengthy judicial career. He was going to dismiss the jury and decide the case on his own. He said that it was impossible for us to decide because we did not have access to all the evidence, but if we had all the evidence, it was a clear-cut decision. This is similar to what's going on with these disgusting books that have been in our school libraries. If the parents of our students and the general public saw what was in these books, there would be a huge uproar, and this room would be full of mad parents. We were not aware of this atrocity, but once we found out, we stood up for our kids to ensure that they are protected, and I hope you'll do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Marilyn McDonald and Steve Mack has donated, so, six minutes, and then Karen Butler will be next.
Chairman and members of the school board, good evening. I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again tonight. I have read over the weekend in the Pensacola News Journal, and another source as well, about the new plans that have been made to deal with the inappropriate library books. It said, "Escambia County Public Schools have implemented a new process that allows parents to choose their student's level of access to school library collections. Parents will be given the opportunity to choose either full access, limited access, or no access to the library media selections, including the online selections." It went on to say that unless a parent requested limited or no access, the student would automatically have full access. Realistically, you and I both know that a lot of parents will not even be aware that this is going on, so their children will have full, complete access to any book available. So, in the full unlimited access, who will be deciding that the material is age and content appropriate? Remember, if a parent signs this unlimited access form, they are assuming that these books have already been properly vetted. They are trusting the school media specialists, the principal, and the school board. The same is true for limited access. A parent might sign a form that they do not want their child to read anything about bestiality. The assumption of the parent is that the library media specialist would know that a particular book does not have that content in it. But do our school media specialists really know the details in every book? If they are relying on their views put out by the liberal American Library Association, they may miss some disturbing storylines in the book and be confronted later by a very angry parent. This puts extreme accountability on the part of the media specialist and the principal. Let's look at the book Last Night at the Telegraph Club, for example. A book found both in elementary and high schools here in Escambia County about a lesbian closet relationship, where two girls engage in oral sex with very detailed description about it. First off, what was this book doing in the elementary libraries? If a parent had signed limited access and an elementary child brought this book home, someone would be held accountable for introducing this material to a young child. I think you really need to ponder if this new method of checking out media materials is a gamble our district is willing to take. Who is going to be held accountable when these unavoidable situations begin to happen? We saw what happened last week at the special school board meeting when a mother realized her child had been violated. Wouldn't it make a lot more sense to start out by making it no access and go from there? With the new laws being passed in this legislative session, if I were a media specialist or someone who oversees them, I would be very cautious, because now you could be in violation of laws and the consequences that go with that. The training material for media specialists makes it clear when it says, "You should always err on the side of caution when selecting materials." I thank God for an Escambia County school teacher named Vicki Baggett, who has brought this information about our public school library books to the forefront. When she found out about these books, she immediately went to work researching and bringing this information to the proper authorities. She cared enough for our children and our grandchildren to stand up and be a voice for them. She has been persecuted and rejected mercilessly when she should have been honored and appreciated. She's done major research, read book after book, made many reports, and now appeals because she cares for the future of our children and families here in Escambia County. She did this for almost a year as a Lone Ranger. That takes guts. But now, things are changing, the light is turned on, and it's getting brighter all the time. More and more parents are finding out what's really going on. I'm appealing to this school board tonight to be willing to be bold and unintimidated like this high school teacher in our district. I'm asking you to stand up and be a voice for our schoolchildren's stability and future, and protect them from this onslaught of darkness, this perverted agenda that is warring against their very souls. Our school board and our superintendent can turn this around if you are willing. I pray you're willing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Karen Butler. She has six minutes. She has three minutes donated by, from Darlene Butler. Darlene, thank you.
Thank you. Last week, we were, I was talking about repeated phrases and responding to them. The last one that I would like to address is the phrase, "Trust the experts." First of all, my first question is, expert in what? Many moons ago, I have a degree, I had a- Many moons ago, I have a degree, I had a teaching certificate, and I taught in this county for five years. I suppose that made me an expert. My expertise was in math and music at the secondary level. That's what I was hired to do, that's what I was trained to do, and that's what I did. It did not qualify me to psychoanalyze my students, to try to give therapy to my students. Yes, there were times when we were notified that a student had some issues, possibly even suicide watch. We had to be careful, we had to be wise, we had to be caring and kind and always respectful of our students, but we were not the therapist. And neither are you and neither are our teachers. And my second question would be, when you say, "Trust the experts," why? Why would I do that? When I look at the plethora of books in our public school libraries right this moment that range anywhere from very covert and subtle messaging to very overt pornography, then I say, "Why? Why would we trust the experts?" When I could walk up to a student on a campus, hand them a book that is in our libraries, and I would be guilty of a felony in the third degree punishable by up to five years per book? Why would I trust the experts when those books are currently in our library and currently available online? Did you think we wouldn't know? Did you think we wouldn't notice? So my response to this is, trust the expert? We don't and we won't. We have seen what's going on and we will not close our eyes. We will stay informed, we will read books, we will issue challenges, we will notify, which we already have, our legislators, our governor, the Florida DOE. We will pose our questions, we will pose our concerns, we will seek legal counsel, we will find out with the current laws what you can and can't do and with the coming laws what you can and can't do. We will learn what you are liable for, what you're culpable for, and we will not be quiet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. And our last speaker tonight with three minutes is Skip Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're accustomed to a divided room. We have a divided community. Although we have a nation that's pretty much divided, pretty much in half, make no mistake, that's not the case in Escambia County, contrary to statements that were made last week. The vast majority of the residents of Escambia County are grateful for and supportive of the direction that the state of Florida is going. New legislation that recently came about and legislation that will come about, it's going to be a game changer in terms of a lot of the discussion we've been having in this room. Also going to give clarity to liability and exposure to liability. Now, you'll be responsible for your own personal liability, but when it comes to exposing the district, it's a different story, totally different story. I'm grateful for a couple of board members that have made a stand. And I'll tell you, I diligently pray for each one of you that if you have convictions of truth, that you'll find the courage to stand for them. The new day coming, unquestionably, there's a new day coming. In terms of the question that's been asked about the default setting or unlimited access, that's not a rhetorical question. We'd be grateful if somebody would give an explanation as to who determines that and why it is what it is now. And I'm going to leave you with this. If crack cocaine legalized, would you be leading the way to protect our kids from crack cocaine? Or would you be fighting tooth and nail to give them access to what the law entitles them to have?
Thank you, sir. There are no more speakers, and so this will conclude the public forum. At this point, I think we have enough time to get through the minutes before we have a time certain. So next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes versus item A, March 10th minutes.
Move the approval of the March 10th special workshop minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any discussion on March 10th minutes?
Motion carries five zero.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Next, item B, March 20th minutes. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move the March 20th.
Motion, I have to need a second.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Next, item C, the March 20th special meeting minutes. I need a motion.
Move the adoption of the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower.
Second the motion.
Second, thank you, Mr. Slaton. Motion and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our last item, item D, March 21st minutes. I need a motion.
Move the adoption of the minutes for March 20th.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton, a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. At this point, I will recess this meeting and call to order. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome, as I call to order, to April's 18th organizational meeting of the Leasing Corporation. This meeting was properly advertised in the Pensacola News Journal on April 13th, legal notice number 5663560. We will begin with the adoption of the agenda, Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Fetzko, we are still actually a few minutes early before the time certain, the time it was advertised to the public.
You're right, we have two minutes to wait. So, yeah, all right, so we are, we are still in recess. That is adjourned, and we will go back to, well, I need to re, do we need, do we actually need a recess, anybody?
No.
All right, no. We are reopening the previously recessed regular meeting of the Escambia County School Boards. We do need a minute or two to change the agendas on the iPads. Moving to administrative appointments, is there a motion?
Move we accept superintendent's recommendation.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded, thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Superintendent, we need to find out what your appointments are at this point.
Yes, I will announce that. This person is not present here this evening. We typically don't have the person show up for this particular position, but it is Kathleen Beecher. She's a specialist in grants management and she is moving in, as a district itinerant, and she is moving into a specialist grant management with school transformation and enrollment services.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Number six, this brings us to proposed additions or revisions for a first reading. The first item is C, changes to school board policy, Chapter Three. Is there a motion?
Move to advertise the changes to school board policy, Chapter Three, school operations.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower, I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen.
My light's on yours, isn't it?
Thank you, gentlemen. Moved and seconded, any discussion? And during workshops and other meetings, these things have been discussed at length, but at this point, if there is none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Our next item is item F, the 2023-2024 Elementary Code of Student Conduct. Is there a motion?
I'll move that item, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Everyone was good with the changes and the revisions and, okay, thank you. Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Our next item is item G, the 2023-2024 Secondary Code of Student Conduct. Is there a motion?
I'll move that item.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. It's moved and seconded, any discussion?
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Up to number seven, there is one item for a public hearing this month. After a motion and second, I will call for the public hearing. Is there a motion on item A?
Move to adopt the changes to school board policy, Chapter Two, Human Resource Services.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower, is there a second?
Second, the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton. Moved and seconded. Is there anyone here to speak at public hearing about the changes to school board policy, Seeing none, any discussion from the board? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Brings us to number eight, consent agenda. This is items eight through thirty-nine. The next item of business is the approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower, a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Moved and seconded. Are there any items to be pulled?
Yes.
Thank you, all right, Mr. Williams?
I abstain from voting on items 12F, MOU between Community Action Program, Head Start Program, and the School Board of Escambia County due to being a board member of the Community Action Program and also abstain from voting on items 31C, lease agreement between the School Board of Escambia County and Community Action Committee with Persian Options due to a board membership on the Community Action Program.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. You have those forms that will be submitted to Ms. Buswell. I'm going to read each category below and see if there's anyone who wants to pull something from curriculum. Seeing none. How about finance? Twenty through twenty-five. Seeing none. Human resources. Twenty-five through twenty-nine. Seeing none. Thirty through thirty-nine. Thirty through thirty-nine. Seeing none. With the exception of the, well, do, we have to vote separately on the ones that were pulled by Mr. Williams? Okay. Need me to say everything over?
No.
Okay. All right, we all need to revote on the consent agenda with the exception of items 12F and
I may have to hit the change button.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. All right. Next, we'll go back to item 12F.
Move the approval of item 12F.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, with the exception of Mr. Williams, we'll all vote for 12F.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We'll go to 31C. I need a motion.
Move the adoption of the lease agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower, a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Moved and seconded, with the exception of Mr. Williams, we will vote for 31C.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. So we are now down to item forty, items from the board, our first, oh, the first item is the school board appointee to the Escambia Children's Trust. Is there a motion?
I move that, Ms. Hightower. I move that Ms. Hightower remains as our appointee to the Children's Trust.
There a second?
Can I...
Well, no, you can't. You can't get a movement, a second.
Second.
It's moved and seconded for discussion. All right, Mr. Williams?
Yes, for clarification, in the last board meeting, it was the reason for wanting to be on the Children's Trust Fund was not due to directing any funds to any special organization. It was my connection to several organizations and the connection I have with the schools in District Three. Several of the organizations wanted to get their efforts toward these schools and address the issues such as parental involvement, closing achievement gap, and after-school care and activities, as well as provide resources to needy families. And I have a question. Ms. Hightower, your term is up in November. And I'm asking for the following considerations to be on the Escambia County Children's Trust. But I must say at this time, I cannot be on the board at this time and for several reasons. One, due to my completion of Chapters Four and Five of my dissertation, as many of you know, that takes a lot of work. I defended it either in late summer or early fall. April, May, June, and July, I'll be writing and editing and submitting and defending. But the other consideration, I would like to work with Ms. Hightower during the months of September through November and attend board meetings. And if I'm truly going to be the next board member on the Children's Trust Fund, I would like to do that. I know this is disappointing to several of my constituents, but I feel it's best to have a transition that is informative, where I can hit the ground running. I appreciate the confidence of Board Member Adams who nominated me a couple of last month. But I'd like for this to be a method in which I become an effective member of the Escambia County Children's Trust Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Or, Mr.?
Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Well, you look so much alike. I just...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Might I respond? Um, Mr. Williams, thank you for that because I believe, I don't know that you're aware, but we have had a really hard time in having a quorum at our meetings. And so, knowing that you have a busy schedule, I appreciate that. And I am committed to letting you serve, but of course, it will be at the pleasure of the rest of the board members. So I just wanted you to be sure that I am intending to not be the representative at our next organizational meeting, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I think it's fine. After I saw Tammy Greer's email to the board, I was curious whether some would change their minds, and that's acceptable. If David wants to go on at the first of the year, that's... I always support that.
But also, I wanted to work with Ms. Hightower those latter months of this year. I'm not sure if there's any...
I think you and I can talk about Children's Trust because we don't serve on that board together.
Yeah.
I can't talk to him about it.
I would just advise you both as school board members to be very careful that you not veer into school board business.
And I'd like to be able to get the meeting dates and one of your meetings.
Our meetings are advertised on the children, Escambia Children's, and be sure to put the S, trust.org website. All of our meetings are listed. They're all open to the public, just like our meetings are, and we have public forum at each of the meetings.
I think I need to start talking to public forum. Mr. Slaton?
That's just what they need. I'd like to say how much I appreciate the cooperative agreement here. That, first of all, I have to think, we have to thank Ms. Hightower for jumping in in the beginning because it's been a bit of a challenge to get started. And I think they're still having some challenging times. And I appreciate Mr. Williams's enthusiasm and willingness to serve in the future. And I think that's a wonderful compromise, and thank you very much to both of you.
I too want to thank the board members for the discussion and for the resolution to this because this board has been a very collegial, very connected group. We've been together and we've worked well together, and this will help that to continue. When this first came up last November, whenever we talked about it, I had stated that, you know, Ms. Hightower was part of the the movement to get a Children's Trust in Escambia County, worked hard on it, met with a lot of fellow board members from other districts at FSBA meetings to get this and to work with the organization. So, I like that this has come to this, and I thank Mr. Williams for his recognition of the the time that's going to be needed and devoted and set his priorities and do those things. Look forward to his serving there. And I look forward to Ms. Hightower finishing this year what she had started. And I know that this is a good resolution for this, and I know that the cooperation and work together will go forward, so. With that in mind, we could vote on this item?
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Superintendent. The next item is Superintendent Evaluation Instrument for Fiscal Year Twenty-two, twenty-three. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the evaluation tool.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower. Second?
Second. The motion.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Adams?
And I probably should have asked this the other day, but I think after the day we had, Friday, we kind of moved through the consent agenda, but the new evaluation that you propose is the old evaluation. Yeah, but I'm just talking about the new one you brought. We decided to stay with the old one. When do you have to bring the new one to make sure he's in that appraisal period? I don't want us to skip that again because this evals kind of the light version.
The biggest thing that, well, it's light only in terms of if you don't give the information areas where you can or discussion.
Yeah, do the comments, yeah.
Okay, in the comments. And that's very appropriate to do that. What we were really looking for was to be able to use the metrics from the finished strategic plan. We now know that we will not get those until this either mid to late summer. And so, that metrics, which is typically a part of a superintendent's evaluation statewide, won't be available. And that's after the time that's required for us to have an evaluation completed. This way, we could go ahead, have the evaluation completed in time so that we meet the requirements of the contract that the superintendent has, and then we'll be able to, or the chair for the twenty-three, twenty-four a year will have the opportunity to develop the next instrument that might be used. Yes, Ms. Hightower?
I think, I don't want to read, I don't want to put words into Mr. Adams' mouth, but what I'm hearing him say is he would like us to go ahead and bring that new evaluation tool sooner so that you're still the chair and you can have a conversation with the superintendent.
Right.
Because that way, and if we need to have a conversation as a board at a workshop about what we are looking for the superintendent to accomplish, I think that would be very appropriate. And to do it before the beginning of the school year or at the beginning of the school year, I agree with you, Mr. Adams.
And I really don't have a problem with that. I think that is a very good idea, a very wise thing to do. Once we have the data, the information from the new strategic plan completed and accepted and approved by the board, we could use that to do an appropriate evaluation for the next period, evaluation period, and have that included on that document. So, that really is timely, and that can happen after the completion and adoption of the new strategic plan with the metrics. That being said, we'll vote to be able to use the...
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, thank you for the conversation. I think it does make a good step to do that in the summertime before the school year because then we can really have a focus on what here are the goals. Everybody's on the same page with that, so I'm very open to that, to what was just discussed.
Very good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next area is items from the superintendent. Our first is item A, disciplinary reassignments. Mr. Superintendent, what is your recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recommend approval for item A, disciplinary reassignments, as noted on the board agenda with details provided in the board backup.
I'll move the superintendent's recommendation.
Motioning?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you, Ms. Hightower. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is item B, formal hearing requests and recommended orders. What's your recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recommend approval for items B, formal hearing requests and recommended orders, as noted on the board agenda with details provided in the board backup.
So, move?
Moved by Mr. Slaton. Any second by Mr. Williams. Thank you, gentlemen. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, sir. Number forty-two, moving to employee discipline. What is your recommendation on item A?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recommend approval for item A, employee discipline.
Motion?
Move the adoption of superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower.
Second. The motion.
Second by Mr. Slaton. Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Next, Mr. Superintendent, item B, what is your recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recommend approval for item B, employee discipline.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that recommendation.
Mr. Adams, I have a motion. I have a second. Mr. Williams, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, sir. Last, item C, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. We have recommendation approval for item C, employee discipline.
Is there a motion?
Recommend the approval of the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, sir. Lastly, we have one item from internal auditing. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the internal auditing reports.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton, and thank you, Mr. Adams. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Adams? Discussion? No. Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, anything for the good of the order?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Hightower.
Um, I serve on the Legislative Committee for the Florida School Boards Association, and at our meeting, there was a discussion about a change in the concordance score opportunity for students. And I know, I sent an email to our superintendent, and he shared with me some feedback that he had received. But I wanted, if we're not going to write the letter, and I have several samples from other districts who have written letters sharing with their legislative delegation how the impact would be on our students this year. The graduating class this year have been through a lot of turmoil in their high school education. And to have this additional obstacle, I will say that, put in their place, I think it would be very good if we, you know, not address the DOE, but if we could address our legislative delegation with the numbers of the students that would be impacted in a negative way with the, if these things happen.
Mr. Adams?
No, I agree, and I was trying to look up because I had one board member send the numbers on how many students there were going to be impacted by this. It was Seminole County, and I...
Flappers, one hundred and seventy-one.
Yeah, it's a large number for Seminole. So if it's like that with Seminole and these other school districts. But their superintendents have already came out with a number that would not graduate underneath these new rules that the Florida legislature is doing. So, yeah, I believe we should send something to our legislators.
Well, I think it's important that we not only let the legislators know, but allow our public to know that this is possibly happening because I think I know Ms. Morgan, every year, has parents who are concerned because their student is so close but not quite there. And there may be more of those this year if this happens, so.
And I found the numbers. For Seminole, that would not graduate would be four hundred and fifty-nine of the four thousand seven hundred and forty-nine seniors that they have would not graduate. And based on the ELO requirement and three hundred and sixteen related to the math, the new math. So, yeah, that's, we already had a historic graduation rate problem this last year, so I agree. I agree, we need to send something.
I too have seen some things that have been posted from other districts who've been, I guess, more involved with this. And there's projections in some districts, thousands of students not graduating this year. This is rather late in the day to be telling a student they're not graduating. But that is happening, or it has the potential to happen statewide in extraordinary numbers. So I think anything we could do to make people aware and if it's able to be curtailed in some way would be beneficial.
There was a forum that was shared among my colleagues that was sent out by Bay County, and they are predicting their graduation rate may drop as low as to seventy-six percent from eighty-five. I'll forward it to all of you so you can see it.
And, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, so here's a, there was a meeting that Ms. Payne and I attended, a regional FADS meeting week prior. And this topic was discussed because as superintendents, we're all very concerned with last year's drop and this year's drop continuing. And if you backtrack it, it's ninth graders who were, the ninth graders during COVID had shut down are now seniors. And so, there was some, we were working on some correspondence with DOE. There was a regional group that contacted DOE, and it was not going to move forward through DOE is the message that we received. So I agree with Ms. Hightower. It makes sense to go through legislatures to try to heighten the awareness of this, so. And those dynamics, those dynamics are just dynamics that I think DOE would take their marching orders from the legislature because you do get into some complexities here with state grading guidelines and so forth. So I think that is the right route to go, is to go through the legislature. I do want to add another piece, and that is there's a bill that's being talked about adding third grade proficiency scores. And I'm not exactly sure, and Ms. Odom, I don't know if you know where that bill is. It's, I don't think it's advanced yet, but it would add another category towards elementary grading for school grades. And right now, you take your English reading scores for... And right now, you take your English reading scores for grades three through five, and that's a category. This would be adding in addition, an additional category of just third grade proficiency scores. So that's a change that would, that would take place, and we've done some preliminary numbers, and it looks like five of our schools would lose a letter grade off of that, and none would increase. So, not a favorable move for our schools.
At this point, taking away the learning gains but adding just proficiency is a real negative in terms of the school grading calculation process, and why that would be done at this point is.
I can't figure that out either.
The justification and rationale for it, in a hush. Ms. Hightower?
Yeah, one of the things that, if we could get them to understand, to leave this senior class harmless, and they could start with the next class, so there's plenty of time to let parents and districts deal with that. I think, you know, I don't mind them putting additional, you know, higher scores if that's what they're looking at. But I also see this as a problem for the state of Florida, who has seen remarkable success in raising our graduation rates and moving our grade up in the Education Weekly or those, because we're hearing from every district that they're going to decrease in their percentage of graduates. And so, you know, I think to give districts a year to know what the expectations are and to be able to work would be in the best interest of everyone.
And I think it's important, too. I don't, I don't mean to, with DOE, I think they have to go carefully with these guidelines, so I don't want to come across saying negative things about DOE. I think, there are a lot of complexities and rules and laws that have to be, have to be followed, so I think, I think our best route to get some movement on this is probably through the legislature. So, thank you.
I got a different subject. Okay. When we did our town hall meeting, the superintendent and I, Lindsay Connor was there, you know, with the community partnership program, plus the clinic people. And what Lindsay has told me that if, what she has requested from Senator Broxton, fifteen million, I think that covers a lot of the state, too, but she would be able to do the community partnership school at Bellevue Middle, plus the full community partnership at Pine Forest. Now, I know we got a lot of low-performance schools, but at least that's a start.
Right.
And so I would be contacting Senator Broxton and Representative Solzman and Alex Androtti to see if they'll support that funding because we know we have something that works, and we need to push forward.
Thank you, sir.
And good luck tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Got to make a long ride to Tallahassee.
Oh, maybe a longer ride home. Mr. Superintendent, okay, I thought your light was on. All right. That being said, next thing else for the good of the order, we are adjourned.